2025 to discuss the water body setback advisory board report. Madam Clerk.
Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee may be calling in, Madam Mayor. Maxwell Sumner.
Present.
Bill Gamble.
Here.
Dmitry Fonoff, are you on the phone?
Yes, I'm here on the phone.
Ron Bernier.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. And if you'll all stand, oh, I'm sorry, need to do the agenda, excuse me. Are there any changes to the agenda? Sorry, guys. I'm getting, I know this, the ginger ale doesn't have any caffeine in it, but I guess I'm running to go. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, then the agenda's through. Okay, now we can all stand. And Chairperson Bill Kende, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you, do you do now or after audience participations? Or what's your prefer, after audience participation, I guess?
I'm grabbing the sheet because I didn't go get it.
Oh, okay, okay. So we will have audience participation. I don't know if there is a signup sheet, we'll find out in a minute. And then we'll go into the items that we're going to discuss. And I'm first of all going to, at that time, acknowledge Alex. Even though the water body setback representatives do have name tags, I'm going to have him introduce because on the water body setbacks, people were chosen for specific slots. And so that might help you as you hear the reports from them, what agency or what committees they were representing. Okay, great, thank you, that's all right. Rod?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Assembly, Water Body Setback Advisory Board. Madam Mayor, I had requested up to seven minutes as a community council representative. Is that acceptable? I have about five minutes of.
Madam Mayor, there is a provision in boroughs, the Assembly's policies and procedures for that, yes.
Okay, and it doesn't have to be requested ahead of time?
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So how much time did you want again, sir?
It should be about five minutes.
Five?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, good evening again. My name is Rod Hanson, I'm president of the Northland Community Council. We appreciate the outreach that was made to the councils as part of this process. The public feedback from community councils and from other individual residents in January of 2025 was significant and comprehensive. The initial outreach resulted in 137 pages of public feedback. And a tally of those responses was basically 52% definitely opposed to what was drafted as a proposal at that time. 21% definitely in favor and 22% kind of mixed, leaning more in opposition than in support, but potentially supportive if there were some changes made to the proposal. I would characterize the position of the NLCC in that last category. I was also in attendance at subsequent meetings of the advisory board. And my observation was that most members of the board took the public input very seriously and made very deliberate efforts to address the many concerns. I believe the final product, if put back out in front of the public, would result in a much more favorable outcome than what I just represented. Within the boundaries of the NLCC, there are 426 lakefront property owners. We have over 10,000 residents, probably 10% of whom reside on water bodies, whether it's lakes or streams. In January, the NLCC provided a four-page letter summarizing the nature of our residents' feedback. We also offered up three specific recommendations and outlined about a seven-step process to implement those recommendations. And I encourage the Assembly to actually take a look at that letter before you ultimately end up making decisions. And I'll provide a copy of that to the clerk by email later. Fundamentally, we were concerned about the process going forward and recommended a much more transparent and visible process of public engagement. A concern about whether the Assembly would take the time to fully understand the proposed changes and why the advisory board came to these recommendations. And in that light, I really commend you for having this meeting tonight. I think that's awesome. A desire also for significantly more public outreach to. That residents' views and it could impact their property values. Bottom line, we strongly believe the setbacks should remain at 75 feet. And if that means there's no path to compliance for those who previously built between 75 and 45 feet, then so be it. We also support the mitigative measures that have been proposed for significant work done between, any work done between the setback and the lake shore. However, we believe the borough should consider training borough staff, like a civil engineer, to review and determine acceptability of those mitigating measures in a consistent way that a property owner may propose, rather than requiring an outreach to an engineering company or a landscape firm. And the cost of that, I think, to a property owner is excessive, whereas a consistent approach by a properly trained civil engineer on borough staff would go, I think, be a better approach. We agree ADEC has the power to regulate fuel tanks and risks to water bodies. That property owners should not be forced to implement those types of expensive improvements on those systems by the borough. The motivation for code changes must be focused not only on making it easy for large developers to build, or not on making it easy for large developers to build closer to shorelines on our lakes. The focus should be number one, on maintaining a 75-foot setback. Number two, protecting the value of existing properties. Number three, protecting the quality of our lakes and streams. And number four, if legally feasible, offering a path to compliance for those who currently built between 75 and 45. But don't allow that situation to perpetuate. Thank you for the time to carefully consider the recommendations of the advisory board as a whole. And I look forward to hearing your discussions. Thank you.
Jean?
Hello, my name is Jean Holt. And I just want to say, I've been in a dentist's office for three hours. So I wasn't going to comment. This is a pivotal moment for the Assembly. And I've been following this for 37 years. And I still, I blame the property owners and I blame the other half to the borough. It's a shame that we've reached this point. And now we're trying to do all this catch-up. And it's very, very important that the Assembly not just cherry pick it to death, but really take the time and energy like this board did. They really went after it. And I thought it was terrible and I'm glad that our mayor suggested this meeting immediately when we had the presentation from the chair of the water body setback. And that was terrible. And I'm, we need to come to agreement. And it's been going on for way too long, 52 years. And I liked the presentation that Rod did. And I think that we got to get something done in a right way. And I don't believe that we should change the setback for future homes between 75 and 45. And I've been too wrapped up in all these variances over the years. And the borough needs to get it together and the property owners. There's a lot of abuse going on. And I hope that you take the time and effort for all to do a good job for our valley, valley of the lakes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean. That takes care of who have signed up, but anybody else is welcome to, yes, come up. State your name and then tell us what it's all about.
I don't have much to say. I'm Ruth Wood, I live in Takiina, I live on a lake. And I'm well, well, well beyond 75 feet because our lakes up there are extremely important buffers around the lakes. And I was really upset to hear of any change to make the setback any less than 75 feet. There are a lot of things in this borough that I know have been involved in. And we've had to have grandfather rights to protect existing things or things that were built when a certain thing was in place. But 45 feet, I don't know what, how much of a discussion you're going to get tonight or what we're going to hear. But 45 feet is not sufficient for a setback from a water body in this borough. So, thank you.
Good to see you again. Anyone else that would like to address the Assembly? Do we have anybody on the line, Caleb? We do not? Okay. All righty, we will close audience participation. And we're now down to business we're going to have. And I think we have, it says here, a brief staff report. And I guess you'll define brief in your own private way, sir. So go ahead.
I was hoping it'd just be a wallflower on the back of the room, but Mike asked me to do a brief presentation. He said five minutes, I did a little practice run and I can't quite make it in five, but I'll keep it under 10, I hope.
You want some of my ginger ale, so you go faster.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly, Alex Strawn, Planning Director for the Borough. I was involved with putting this group together and was there every step of the way, sort of helping to facilitate the information and the draft ordinance. And it was quite the intensive experience. As you well know, I delivered a presentation to the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and Assembly. So you're, should be pretty familiar with what's in the recommendations. So I'm, but I'm just going to do kind of a brief overview or review of the things that I went over, kind of recycling a presentation that I already did once. Feel free to ask questions along the way. So, 1973, we adopted 75-foot water body setback. That was the law of the land. In 1986, the Borough Assembly dropped it down to 45 feet for six months. And then there is an election where there was a ballot measure bringing it back to 75 feet and that overwhelmingly passed. So the law of the land since May 12, 1987, has been 75 feet. And so that created a whole group of grandfather rights, as everybody knows. We did do an analysis, a GIS analysis. So this, you have to take it with a grain of salt. But we estimated the amount of structures that are within 75 feet of a water body. Around 156 are built between 45 and 75 feet after May 12, 1987. So those would be the ones that, in this ordinance, would be given a path to compliance. And then, and then any future homes also would be given a path to compliance. That was a change that was made. So the day after the joint Assembly Planning Commission meeting, the Water Body Setback Advisory Board had their final meeting where they made that big change based on the attorney's recommendations. And there's a couple of other minor changes that were made as part of a compromise that allows future homes to also be built within 75 feet of a water body. But no homes, under any circumstances, unless they're built prior to 1973, would be allowed to be within 45 feet of a water body. So the Water Body Setback Advisory Board was a group of a variety of viewpoints and skillsets and knowledge bases that came together and that many of them are in this room right now. We can, we can acknowledge the people who are in this room right now. So representing design, construction, stormwater abatement are Bill Cleaver Saddle, who's a civil engineer, as well as Tim Alley, who also is a civil engineer. We have Bill Haller, who could not make it tonight, who's in Home Builder Lending Real Estate, Matsu Salmon Habitat Partnership, Matt LaCroix. We have the Fish and Wildlife Commission, represented by Kendra Zamzow. And then CJ Cohn could not make it tonight. And then at-large members were Jeanette Purdue, who's not here tonight, but was at many of the meetings, Bill Kende, who is our chair, and then Carl Brent, who's not here today. Yep, so wide variety of skillsets, knowledge base and viewpoints. So we actually met 19 times. And there was a whole lot of learning that went into this before we ever even started working on an ordinance. We learned all about the different sections of code. We learned about water quality, we had engineers come speak, lenders. We had the EPA, the DEC, we had, we had our attorneys come, we talked about co-compliance, we talked about all these different things. And then once we had all that knowledge in the room, then we started in on recommendations. And I'm just going to go briefly over what is actually recommended in this, between this resolution and the draft ordinance that's attached to it. So homes previously built in violation of 75-foot water by setback of lake can become legal provided, so they are not within 45 feet of the lake. They have to hire an engineer to calculate stormwater, to manage the stormwater that comes off that property. And we stole linkage from the subdivision construction manual. So it's not like 100% of the water body, water has to be infiltrated. You know, it's a certain percentage based on the size of the storm and things like that. Again, going forward, people can build up to 45 feet if they get a land use permit. There's a maximum amount of impervious surface that can be put in place within that 75 feet. So, so no more than 20% of the area within a 75-foot setback can be impervious. There has to be 50% of the riparian buffer has to be maintained. So that's the vegetation within 25 feet of the water body has to be maintained. And then, again, they have to capture runoff that is overseen by an engineer. So going forward, any mechanized land clearing on a lakefront or riverfront property would have to get a land use permit. So if you're taking a dozer or an excavator on your waterfront property, you would have to get a land use permit with the borough and we'd ensure that this, all the standards that are in place are met. And then there would be new law of the land for all lakefront properties that would be the new rules for anybody who has a lakefront. So within 25 feet of the water body, you cannot have kennels, stables, animal yards, and animal waste facilities. You can't have any paved vehicle parking areas. So no storage of liquids, substances. There would be a requirement that you maintain 50% of the vegetation within that 25 feet. And then no application of fertilizers or herbicides. I put pesticides, it's actually herbicides in the ordinance. And then no stockpiling of imported snow. A major change that this, this does is setbacks right now, the law of the land is it only applies to habitable structures. So this would actually change that to have it also apply to commercial and industrial facilities. And then another big one would be petroleum storage tanks. So your fuel storage tanks for home heating oil would have to be 75 feet from a water body, unless you retrofit those to have like a double-walled tank with secondary containment. But, but the law of the land would be, you either have to have it meet those standards of secondary containment, or you'd have to have it 75 feet away. If you already have a petroleum storage facility within 75 feet of a water body, you would have five years to come into compliance with the code, as it's written right now.
Sorry, can I ask you a question on that? So if they continue to live in the house, they'd have five years. If they sold the property, would that still be within the five years? Or do they have, when they sell the property, do they have to rectify it at that time?
So I think, you know, this is a zoning ordinance and zoning sort of runs with the land. So from five years from the time this would be adopted, whoever owns the property, five years from then, would have to come into compliance.
Okay.
Yeah. Regardless of whether it's not. Yep. They did recommend enhanced enforcement. So having additional staff to patrol water bodies to ensure that people who are doing mechanized land clearing do come in to get their permit and meet the standards. There would be a limitation on variances. So variances would not be allowed within 45 feet of a water body. And, and then if a variance is allowed between that 45 and 75 feet, that they'd have to obtain a land use permit that has the provisions for stormwater runoff and impervious surfaces and riparian buffers and things like that. And then they also recommended a habitat that the Assembly look into and consider a habitat protection tax incentive, similar to what the Kenai Peninsula Borough has. And essentially what that is, is if a landowner does modifications to their property to protect the water quality, they can take the receipts that they spent that money on and they can get tax breaks over the next three years and recoup that investment that they made to protect the water bodies. And that's all I have for my very brief overview.
I think you accomplished it, sir.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, absolutely.
The slide where you have the number of the legal properties, how did you, is that your best guesstimate? Are those homes, structures, how did we calculate those figures?
Yeah, so to Assembly Member Nowers through the mayor. So, so this was a GIS exercise. And what we have is, we have LiDAR data from much of the borough, which LiDAR data is very high-resolution topography. But one of the products that comes out of LiDAR data is a building footprint. And then we also have shoreline breakpoints. So you can, you're, we're very good at telling where the shoreline of a lake is. And we're very good at telling where the boundaries of a, of a structure is. So we can count the structures that are within 75 feet of a lake. Then we looked at assessments data and looked at the year built. So we took that into consideration. And then, let's see, what else was in there? There was one other thing. I guess a difficult part of it is that the year built doesn't necessarily coincide with the rectangles that are within 75 feet of water bodies. So it's really difficult to tell, but it gives us an idea of how many setback violations are out there.
Okay, and these are homes, they're not some other structure?
So we counted structures that are over 480 square feet. We have no idea if they're habitable, if they're, what they're used for. We just counted all structures over 480.
It could be a few shops in there, but probably mostly homes.
Perhaps, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from, oh, I'm sorry, Assemblyperson Sumner, go ahead.
Yeah, I had two questions. Actually, this slide is the first question. So if I'm reading this right, you know, roughly, we have 969 structures under 45 feet to a lake, basically. Or is that lake or stream or river?
That sounds right. These are just lakes.
Right, just lakes.
And these are just lakes within the areas that we have LiDAR.
Oh. And so about 762 that are 45 to 75.
Looks about right.
All right. All right, that was my first question. And the next question was, do we have the, I mean, I'm sure I can find it somewhere, but do, the text of the task for the Water Body Setback Advisory Board?
Can pull that up pretty easily. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. That's, do you want Lonnie to pull that up?
Yeah, Lonnie can.
Or Brenda? If you, I can guide you to it.
You want the ordinance?
So the ordinance that established the Water Body Setback Advisory Board, it is on the webpage.
I didn't have a question about it, I just wanted to review it.
Sure.
Again.
Which one did you want, Alex, the ordinance?
The ordinance that established the board in the first place.
I thought you wanted the draft one, sorry, misunderstood.
Oh, so if, if you were to go to all boards, to our borough website and go to all boards.
Oops, hold on, I'm clicking too quick. Okay.
Scroll all the way to the bottom. Go to the Water Body Setback Advisory Board detail. Then let's see.
Middle of the page.
That's the one. And that should have, it looks like it has a link, hyperlink.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Was there a specific question you had regarding that?
Yeah, I wanted to read what their task was.
Let me see if I can.
There's like one paragraph that said that this is what they're going to be determining.
Scope of duties, right there.
Yes, that's correct, scope of duties. So I guess my question for Alex is on slide, on the Water Body Setback Advisory Board Recommendations, that slide. So would you, if you, so basically, if we go back to the.
Okay, I'll go back.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So the task is to review and recommend any changes to the borough code relating to water by setbacks or related issues. Related issues, so you would say the water body setbacks. Okay. Yeah, so most of this is deal with structures in violation, blah, blah. So the related issues would be everything besides that first bullet point on the recommendations. Is that correct?
Well, all these recommendations are related to water body setbacks.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Assemblyperson Gamble, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So just following up on what Assemblymember Sumner just said. When you convened the Water Setback Board, how did you convey the directions from this ordinance? What was your guidance to this board on how they were supposed to carry out this ordinance?
So it's been a couple of years now, but from what I recall, Mayor, is certainly that, that ordinance that formed the board was front and center of, of, you know, what people, where our charter was, essentially. I did give them sort of the history of how we got to that point because it was originally Assemblymember Two, and then it was Assemblymember Yount. And then there is, there was discussion amongst the board. So I conveyed those discussions that occurred leading up to that point. And then I had a, an ordinance that had gone to, through the Planning Commission and to the Assembly, that we sort of used as a starting point. And that's, that's where we started.
Do you have follow-up, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So Alex, I'm going to ask your opinion. I hope I don't make you too comfortable, uncomfortable with it. But do you think that the board kind of on its own expanded what the intent of the Assembly was with that ordinance?
Well, I think it's, when you talk about the Assembly as a whole, their intent was described in that scope of duties. I'm sure that there were individuals who had, you know, their own opinions on what should come out of that board. But when we talk about the Assembly as a whole, the only thing I can really go on is that ordinance that was adopted.
Thank you.
Assemblyperson Hale.
So when you talk about the original ordinance that you kind of was a starting point, that was the ordinance that originally completely eradicated the water body setback. Is that the, is that the ordinance that you're referring to when you say that that is kind of your starting point?
No, so the very original ordinance was just eliminating the water body setbacks altogether. That, that failed pretty quickly. It didn't make it very far. Then an ordinance was drafted that, it was much simpler than what is in recommended, but it was allowing homes to be built within up to 25 feet of a lake, provided that they hire an engineer. provided that they hire an engineer. And that was proposed by Assemblymember Yount. I did make a couple of changes to it to make it a little more, make a little more sense. But that's basically what we used as a starting point.
Okay, yeah, I, that second ordinance had completely slipped my mind. I remember it now, with the 25 foot setback, yeah. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Nowers?
I'm going to apologize for starting the questions to Alex, but I did ask for this meeting after our presentation that we got to the Assembly and the reason was I wanted to be able to discuss some of the things that the committee looked at because at some point we might be wrestling with these. And so I know you guys really dived into it. So I was hoping that we would have more of a, sort of a grilling of Mr. Strong. And I apologize because I start a conversation with the committee members about some of the things that they looked at and how they wrestled with it.
Let me see if there's any more assembly questions. Okay. Yeah, I guess if some of the board members want to give some input about your many hours of work and how maybe you came up with some ideas or thoughts that maybe you had that you changed your mind while you were on the committee or, you know, we're open for whatever. So, yeah. By the way, happy birthday. You didn't bring us any cake?
Just got back from Ancre.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll forgive you this time. Go ahead.
Bill, can I get you to pull the table back so the mic's closer to you? Sorry about that.
I guess I couldn't pull the chairs forward. This is Bill Klebestadl. We wrestled with a lot of the issues that came up. Of course, the idea was just to pass legislation that would allow for these grandfathered properties to be in. But as we met and we discussed with the resource agencies as a civil engineer, when these ideas came up, what we couldn't or really wouldn't dismiss them out of hand because they were very reasonable. Matt LaCroix and Kendra Zamzow brought a lot of these to the, to the meeting. And the, to dismiss those many suggestions of resource based out of hand would have done a, done a disservice. We're an advisory board, so maybe we took the easy route by really loading up the recommendations. But again, all those, all those recommendations certainly made sense. I made the motion near the end of the, the second to the last meeting, the penultimate meeting, I've been hearing that a lot, based on the recommendation from a legal that we are going to create a disparity between the 45 foot group and the 75 foot group. And it was going to put the borough staff in a position of trying to defend something that legally maybe is indefensible. Until someone sues, it hasn't been resolved. So in any event, as an advisory board, we brought these ideas forward, maybe too many of them. I sense from Assemblymembers Sumner and Gamble that, that we did bring a lot more than was expected, but we're, we're the technical committee, we're not elected officials. So I guess we brought those so that the recommendations could be selected à la carte, cherry picked out of that, some dismissed, some adopted. But ultimately that if we presented less than, less than what we did, would that have been worth, worth everyone's time for doing this? So yes, we're bringing a lot of suggestions to, to the Assembly. And I guess they have to, they can pick and choose from that what, what they choose to go forward with based on the general opinion of all their constituents.
Okay, anybody else from the committee? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, how's that? Closer, okay. Yeah, as, as Bill said, it was a long process. We had a lot to learn and as we absorbed more information, it did expand what we might be considering. I think part of what I try to think about is, is why, why are we doing this? Why is there a setback? What is the bigger picture? And so that, as a, as a member of the Fish and Wildlife Commission, it's water quality and habitat, but it is also this idea of neighborhood aesthetics. As people have mentioned, we've built here and we don't want someone building in front of us. So we really balance, we tried to balance a lot of that. And you saw those numbers on the slide of how many people are, could come into compliance if we went, if we had an exception and brought people that were between 45 and 75 feet. It's like 160 homes, something like that. It's not much. And so we were able to come to a compromise that that was not going to overall impact water quality, habitat, the bigger picture, to bring those people into compliance. After the public comment period and the second legal opinion that said one or the other, that's where things became very difficult. And we also had a very short period of time at that point. We had a certain set number of meetings we were allowed and we couldn't go any further. So, so that's part of what we really struggled with. And it was a struggle right to the very last meeting. I mean, I held up the last meeting. We had five members present and you need five to pass anything. And I said, no. And so we had to come up with a compromise and we basically closed a couple of loopholes. And I said, okay, I'll vote for that, just so we didn't lose all the work we'd done. I'm not necessarily in favor of a 45 foot setback, but it was a compromise. We were, we were writing code by committee. Something I'm not familiar with. So none of us is used to doing this. You know, we're doing our best. One of the things that Alex really kind of drilled into us is if we want compliance, we need details. And so that's where the permit and all of that extra information, what seems to be extra information came through was for planning to be able to enforce, the more details they can have, the easier it's going to be for them to put something through, to make something stick. So I think a lot of us would agree, it looks overly burdensome. We'd love to simplify it, but we also need to find a way to make sure any kind of compliance is actually going to stick. And so we had to listen to people with experience in that area. So I, that's, those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Okay. Should I get some more comments or would you prefer to? Okay, okay, yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I like what I heard from Bill Klebestadl. You guys can pick and choose. I guess it's no secret how I feel about this. Hopefully you, you throw more away than you keep. But there is one point that really bothered me and I spoke to legal about it and I had a very general question for him, you know, and he gave me a very general answer, but said, hey, you know, it all depends on all the details in it. So, but generally it was the people that were in compliance now and had five years to make changes. And in here, it says that, and legally the, the Assembly can put in code that there is no grandfather rights. But my question was, can they also put in there in this ordinance that there are grandfather rights? So, and, and again, the attorney said, you know, that's a pretty broad statement. It all depends on the, on the details. But I just wanted to float that idea and when you guys are looking at this thing. I, I just, if it was, it was me, I've been fine all these years and all of a sudden I have five years to spend extra money to get into compliance, I think I'd be pretty upset. So I just wanted to float that idea with you guys.
Okay. Anybody else from the committee? Tim, you have any comment?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I'll kind of reiterate a little bit of what Bill had said. I think, you know, when you start looking at what, and Kendra as well, when you start looking at what, what the reason for a setback is, it's more than just, you know, the pollution coming off the building. You have several backup, you know, facilities for that compromise, you know, what's the word? Anyway, you know, you got your septic systems, you got your, your fuel tanks, you got your paved areas and all of that contributes to pollution into our, our water bodies. And so that's why if it seems like the scope got increased, you know, that's, that's, that's those other items, you know, and that's a pretty broad statement in the, in the, in our instructions. I do, I do believe, you know, again, the kind of last hour, we, we came kind of a compromise that was, we, we agreed that we can allow structures up to 45 feet, but, but in the other side of the compromise is to reduce the amount of impermeable area allowed within the 45 foot setback to, I think it's 20%, 20%. So that, that's pretty restrictive. I didn't quite, you know, there's things in here that I don't quite agree with. I also, as an engineer, was taking more of a, you know, expertise stance on this and helping, you know, listening to our, our people from our water body or wildlife committees and as well as the general public and trying to, you know, form something that is going to work in the code. That's where, you know, I pulled in the subdivision construction manual, made the recommendations for the stormwater abatement stuff because it's something that is already being requested or required by developers. So, you know, seems to translate pretty well to, to this. The calculations as far as that goes, it's relatively simple. I think there is a potential concern with the increased demand on the local engineers, especially for something like this. People aren't going to be wanting to, to spend a lot of money. So that is a concern. I could definitely see that. But I, I think we came up with a pretty good solution. I mean, it is, yeah, it is hefty, but there's a lot to be considered here.
Okay, Matthew, did you want to chime in?
I suppose I'll chime in. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly. One, one point that I'd just like to make is that the board faced a bit of a challenge. The original ordinance establishing the board indicated that there would be a report that would be provided to the Assembly. And, and we diverged from that and we prepared draft ordinance language. I, I don't mean to speak for Alex. I think his perspective was that drafting the language by committee or otherwise really was the heavy lifting and that if the board could do that and provide it to the Assembly, then, then we would be doing a service to the Assembly. As was already mentioned, we were drafting language down to the last day, which didn't really provide an opportunity to, to share with the Assembly or with members of the public the rationale behind the recommendations. And, and I want to just assure the members of the Assembly that, that there's nothing in the recommendations that was made up or pulled out of thin air. There's a substantial, substantial rationale that can be provided for every recommendation that, that was made. I was envisioning that this work session would provide an opportunity for members of the Assembly to, to ask specific questions, to probe, you know, a rap, where did you come up with this number? Why, why did you recommend this as opposed to something else? Because I think that, that Alex and members of the board are ready to provide those types of answers. If, if we're not able to address all the questions that Assemblymembers have during this meeting, I think that there's still an opportunity for questions to be presented to borough staff for follow-up responses. And because those answers are there, right? The rationale is, is there. I think as has been stated, you know, the board put in a lot of effort, did their homework and, and there's nothing that was proposed kind of on a whim, right? And I'll also reiterate, as has already been mentioned by several board members, the final product is very much a compromise. And I would say there, there's no member of the board who agrees with everything that's here. But we, we were willing and desire us, as Kendra said, not to, not to lose the work product, right? So we wanted, we wanted to compromise where it was, we felt it was reasonable to do that, do so, provide it to the Assembly for additional deliberation, right?
Okay, thank you. Assemblyperson Sumner, would you like to ask your question or comment?
Well, I think my question was actually just answered. I was.
Oh, okay.
My question was just about that we have, you know, we have two documents in front of us, the, the resolution and then the, the ordinance, you know, seeing what was the work product provided by the advisory board and what was, were provided by the staff. But if my understanding is correct, based on Matthew's comments, that the advisory board itself drafted this ordinance by committee. Is that correct?
Assemblymember Sumner, yes. Actually, both documents were drafted by, by committee, by the board. So both the resolution and the draft ordinance. And, you know, if you read carefully, you'll see that there's, there's some areas of the, some language in the draft resolution, or in the resolution, excuse me, no longer draft, it was, it was approved by the board. But there's, there's things that don't line up perfectly because we were working on both kind of simultaneously. But the, the resolution captures in a certain way, kind of the, the reasoning, the rationale, the wherefore, right? Why, in broad brushes, the recommendations that are contained in the draft ordinance were, were there.
That answer you? You have follow up, sir? No? Okay. Assemblyperson Gamble, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have a question to the board about how you came up with the 45 foot setback. And most of your recommendations in here, I mean, it's pretty obvious why they're there. I get it. But if this went through with a 45 foot setback, somebody who currently built 75 feet or further back, you know, being in compliance, now somebody else could come in and build a home within 45 feet and obstruct their view, possibly even build vertically and, you know, ruin why they bought that piece of property. So can you walk me through how you came up with the 45 foot setback and did you have that discussion? I'm sure you did.
Thanks. I'll lead off on that. But that, that was probably the most contentious issue before the, before the board that we faced. And as such, it was near, near the end that we suggested 45. That number came purely from that six month window back in 1986 where it was allowed. And because of it being allowed for that period, we are creating a disparate treatment between two different groups of people. I believe the, and the general preference of the board was 75 feet throughout. And it was only because of the, the sound legal opinion that, that it existed for that 45 feet for, for a while. It created a different group of people that, that now they enjoyed that and no one else can. So again, our, our leaning was towards 75 feet, but we, we voted on 45 just because of that, again, that disparate treatment issue.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think part of it too was we thought a lot of these recommendations really would help water quality and improve our existing code. If we could just add them to the existing code, but we felt like there may not be the stomach in the Assembly and to keep the 75 feet and add more to it. So add, and add riparian buffers and add a limit on impervious surfaces. So we felt like the Assembly might look at it better if they could get, people could get closer and they might adopt some of these other suggestions we had for stormwater analysis and so forth, that we thought were really good ideas to maintain water quality and habitat and again, neighborhood aesthetics as well. So I think it was that, that balance. I think we would all, most of us maybe would love to have the 75 feet and everything else, but we didn't know if that's what the Assembly would, would agree to.
Daniel, follow up, sir?
Okay, and along those same lines, I'm sure you guys had this discussion also because I heard from, I represent Big Lake and a lot of the surrounding areas, contractors that have told me that people intentionally built within 75 feet, knowing that they were violating code and actually told the contractor, either you do it or I'll find somebody who will. So how, I mean, how do we justify rewarding those people with a path to compliance when they basically, you know, told us to take our code and put it where the sun don't shine? So tell me how that discussion went.
Well, that was the other half of the really hard discussion, the 45 and 75. But it was also how many people have done this intentionally and how? how many didn't know? And, and so that again was the balance of trying, we, we definitely don't want to bring, to reward people that have intentionally flouted the code. But we also know there really are people out there that didn't know. And, and so we were trying to balance that. And again, the majority of our year and something that we spent on this, we thought we were carving out an exception for a few homes. Um, it was when we had to decide what, what's going to happen in the future that, and, and it was a, it was kind of a, it, it came out 7-0, our vote, but it was incredibly contentious to, to get there. So, and again, these are recommendations. You guys are the ones that are going to come up with an ordinance if you want a, a different ordinance. So, yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead, Matthew. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to say something?
Okay. Well, you can correct me, Alex, if I say something, um, that's, that's incorrect. So to, to speak to that and to speak to your earlier question, Assemblymember Gamble, um, the 45-foot, as Bill indicated, uh, that number was based on the, the least distance that the setback in its history has been for six months. And, and the idea of, of the board was that, well, we're going to hold everybody to that 45-foot distance, right? So someone who's seeking a, a variance, they're going to be held to that. Someone who's existing, we're going to give them a path to compliance. And this, this leads to that second half of your question because the board interpreted that ordinance, which set us, you know, which initiated this process, uh, as being focused to a certain extent on how do we deal with existing non-conforming structures? And, uh, we know that we have structures, some of which were built in, you know, intentionally in violation of code. But the reality is that once a structure's in place, it's difficult to move and it may take years of, of court actions. That's what we heard. And so it may never be moved and in the interim, water quality potentially will be suffering. So understand, with the understanding that there was a desire on at least some members of the Assembly that there be a path to compliance, uh, the board tried to create that path. And, and it's, I think it's important to, to bear in mind that it's not an amnesty that's being recommended. It's not, well, we're going to, all is forgiven. We're just going to change the code and allow you to be within 40, you know, as close as 45 feet. The idea is, there's, there's a hoop. There's actually multiple hoops that you have to jump through and there's a process where you can apply for a permit. And if you can demonstrate that, that your existing structure or a proposed new structure is not going to result in impacts to the larger community, your, your neighbors around the lake, for example, or members of the public that have a right to access and use that lake, um, then we'll give you a permit and, and you can come into compliance through that avenue. So, uh, as has been mentioned, this was a contentious issue. There was a lot of input from the public as well as whether they were in support of an opportunity for existing structures to come into compliance or whether we should hold the line and say, you know, if you're closer than 75 feet, that's, it's a circumstance you placed yourself in. So there was, there was a lot of thought given to how do we make this rigorous such that it's protecting the larger community, but not out of reach for property owners that want to come into compliance, right? And as was, was pointed out, kind of at the last minute, we were forced to entertain the idea, well, if we're going to be consistent, then we would apply those same standards to new construction going forward, right?
Didn't Alex, did you? No, he took care of it for you. Okay. All right. Bill, go ahead. Yeah.
This is Bill Klebesettl. What it, it comes down to, and I, I have seen a lot of that going on where, when I'm installing, uh, overseeing septic systems, we, we try to catch all these, uh, all the requirements. And many times people will say, yeah, but I don't want it there. I want it here. It's going to look better. But heading down a rabbit trail, ultimately what it comes down to is, is enforcement. People will do what they can get away with if they think they can get away with it. And so I've heard the, the term staff being mentioned. Staff could be one, could be many. Our general intention was, in the back of our mind, having one person, one borough, new borough staff dedicated to water body setback, not a huge group, but just one person to go around, but the resultant punishment or, uh, consequences to, to, basically to cause injury for the people that flaunted the rules. But ultimately, it is what it is.
Um, assembly. Okay. Anybody else from the committee first? Okay. Assemblyperson Nowers, did you have a question or comment?
Thanks for, uh, Bill bringing up the, you know, issue of, uh, rewarding people who flouted the rules. And thanks to Mr. LaQua, that's exactly the, the point of why I want to have this meeting because you guys looked at these things in detail and I'm sitting up here trying to wrestle with, like, we, we want to keep our water clean, um, but we don't want to have overly onerous regulations or ones that we are not going to enforce well. And so, um, I did have a couple of things that I wondered about, um, just not being an expert in water quality. One was the, the riparian buffer, the 25-foot. How did you, is that just kind of best standard practice around the country? And I got a couple more, but that was one.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Yes. So, uh, I, I would say the 25 feet is not, uh, best practice. 25 feet, uh, is a substantial compromise, uh, knowing a couple of factors. Um, one, earlier in the process, uh, many of what subsequently became recommendations for all, all properties were intended to apply to structures that were closer than 75 feet, right? And so if your, if your structure is as close potentially as 45 feet from the water's edge and knowing that, uh, it, it is a good practice to have a fire safe cleared zone around your structure as much as 35 feet, what is, how much riparian buffer is actually possible to require? So that's kind of where the number came from. Uh, if you look at other standards, uh, city of Wassila has a 75-foot setback, but their code requires that that entire 75 feet be vegetated with native vegetation. I won't speak to the, how rigorously they enforce that. Um, it seems like it would be very challenging because you would want to have a, a minimum cleared area around every structure, right? The state within the Susit and Matneuska area plan, which, which covers most of the Mat Supero or the, certainly the core area, indicates that 80% of vegetation within 60 feet of the water's edge should be retained as a buffer, right? And that's the minimum buffer. It's actually greater, um, if, for anadromous water bodies and for high, high-value resident fish water bodies, which could include things like stocked lakes, right? Under the old coastal zone management plan, buffers for commercial buildings were typically 100 feet vegetated. So, I mean, that's been sunset, but historically, um, and, and looking at multiple references, uh, a riparian buffer would tend to be much wider than 25 feet, right?
Yeah. Follow-up. The other thing that I looked at is in terms of enforcement is that 20% rule, the impervious surface. And it sounds like if you'd maybe been able to stick with 75 feet, that wouldn't have been, you wouldn't have changed that, but, um, it just seems difficult, it seems complex to enforce. But maybe I'm reading that wrong and just kind of where you come up with that, if it was just a compromise, um, where that figure comes from and what you thought about being able to enforce that easy way.
Let you speak to it. Um, so Assemblymember Nowers. So that also is a compromise. It's, um, depending on, on your reference source, impervious surface values much lower than 20% are considered to contribute to water quality impairment. The focus was strictly on this, the area between the water body and 75 feet, so within that setback area. And knowing that certain structures are already allowed by code and, and that the, the board would be recommending that additional structures would be allowed by code. The question is, well, i- if you have a 5%, you know, impervious cover limit, for example, you can't really put a structure within that setback. Uh, and in fact, many existing structures, many existing property owners would probably be in violation of that. So, uh, the, the 20% is a, you know, it is a compromise. It allows for reasonable, you know, which is in the eye of the beholder, I understand, reasonable development within the 75 feet. It doesn't eliminate all potential uses. It doesn't prohibit people from getting the land use permit to authorize an existing home to remain within that 75 feet or going forward, someone getting a permit to put a new structure within, uh, that area. But it would prevent, say, for example, a 5,000 square foot home, uh, going, you know, as close as 45 feet on a one-acre parcel, right? You would exceed that threshold in that type of case. The current code has the setback, but doesn't really restrict any activity within the setback. And so under current code, you can clear all the vegetation, you can pave it, you, you can store, uh, you know, you, you can turn your property into a junkyard, not that that would ever happen in the Mat Supero. But, so, so the board is saying, okay, we know that there's some holes and some gaps in terms of, uh, certainly the issue of protecting water quality within the current code. Can we address it and still create this path for compliance for some existing structures and, and accommodate future development? I don't know. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. And just one more follow-up. I take what Ms. Holt said, uh, to, for what it's worth, that, uh, half of this is the borough's fault and half of this is property owners. Um, and I think it's always a challenge to, and I, I know you guys wrestled with that, like, compliance, like, how do you get compliance? And we're creating a, a complex system. If, if we don't have the funding or the will to add compliance, I wonder, do you support any change to a lower standard? And did you have thoughts on how to actually increase compliance?
Yeah.
Beyond just additional staff going out and checking people?
Okay. Yeah. I realized I, I skipped over the compliance question that you had earlier. So the, the land use permit process is intended, you know, in part to be a, a compliance mechanism. Uh, as I think Tim was talking earlier, saying, you know, you're submitting your plans to the borough, uh, for review. They've been prepared, uh, arguably, if, if you have the stormwater standards to meet by an engineer. And, and during that review, prior to issuance of the land use permit, the borough staff is, is asking, are you in compliance with these standards, right? If we approve, for example, this structure, is that going to put you over the 20% impervious limit? Have you, do you have, have you removed all the vegetation on your, on your site? Does this structure meet the standards that are built into the code? And, and so that's the primary mechanism rather than additional folks going out and investigating or, or looking. Uh, certainly Alex has talked about that. The board has discussed it. Our focus was on what we could put in code that would, you know, notify the public, these are what the standards are. This is the process you have to follow. And allow that mechanism to, uh, to provide the, the borough a, a means to, to verify, right? As opposed to independently going out and checking compliance, right? Certainly the provisions are enforceable independently, but, but the permit process was intended to be perhaps a primary mechanism of enforcement.
Yeah. Assemblyperson Sumner, is that okay if I recognize you? Thank you. Now, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alex Strawn, Planning Director. Just to address the question of compliance, and I expressed this to the board, uh, the way it is right now, you know, there's no permit for clearing or paving or whatever it may be. Boathouses are exempt. You know, uh, commercial structures aren't applicable. So we generally find out about construction on a lake after it's been built. Uh, at the very least, there's a foundation, maybe there's a first floor, maybe it's been sited, who knows? But once there's a structure up, it's really difficult to enforce because there's no good remedy other than tearing the house down or moving it. So we'll find out that a house was built, we'll go out there and be like, okay, there's this big house out there. What's the remedy? We can just write tickets until, you know, I don't know. Uh, so the idea for enforcement was this early detection. We'd have somebody, if there's machinery out there that's clearing, then they'd have to tell us what their intent is and come up with a plan to meet the, the regulations. That was the, the purpose of that sort of grade and fill permit for, uh, water bodies.
So one quick follow-up on that and then we'll see. But, um, so if we made a mandatory land use permit and somebody built in violation of that, aren't we back to, oh, you got a foundation in, what the heck do we do?
Right. So, yeah, that, I mean, the idea was that you'd have somebody just patrolling water bodies and you catch them at the point that they're actually doing it. Then if they continue to build without a plan, then you can write citations, you can get NIC involved and, and do all that early on in the process before they've invested tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars.
You got to have those bodies to be checking all the time then? Yeah. I'll have other questions, but I'll see you.
Assemblyperson Sumner.
Madam Mayor, if I could add one more comment on compliance? Yeah. Assemblyman Nowers. The other part of compliance is, as I said, there are people out there that didn't know about the regulations. So that's an outreach issue. And I believe the planning department has some funding for, through a grant to do some outreach, but, uh, there may be other methods that should be considered. Um, I don't know if that's like a postcard when somebody buys a property or on a tax assessment, you know, a, a link to here's where your, uh, here's where your setback regulations are, all of your setbacks. But coming up with something just to make sure everybody knows and they don't have a reason to say that they didn't know about it.
Assemblyperson Sumner, go ahead.
Yeah. I guess this question's probably for Alex. Um, is there any, uh, data on if, you know, houses built within 75 feet of, of lakes are causing impairment to the water bodies? I mean, I know, we know that Big Lake is impaired. Do we know what the source of pollution is? I mean, how much, how much impairment is being caused by fuel tanks and fertilizer?
So, to the mayor, I, I, I'm not sure I can answer that question right here, right now. I know that, um, we have a couple of water bodies that do have, they're considered impaired because of, uh, hydrocar- carbon type sources, uh, whether that's fuel tanks or two-stroke engines, I don't know. But, you know, certainly I think it's, um, it's pretty easy to make the link between just human activity and, and the fluids that come with us, drips and leaks and things like that.
I can help answer that a little bit. Um, there are several water bodies, uh, within the borough, Cottonwood Creek, I believe Wassila Creek, um, uh, Lucille Lake, uh, Lake Lucille. Um, Lake Lucille in particular, I believe, is, is a, a partial issue due to fertilizers. They're having to go through there with a boat, lawnmower, basically, and cut, cut out the algae out of there. Cottonwood Creek is impaired, if I remember right, it's listed as an impaired water body for fecal coliform. So that's coming from animals, it's coming from septic systems, that kind of thing. Same with Wassila Creek as well. So, I mean, and, and in general, development impairs water bodies. I mean, if you're close to a water body, you're causing an issue, albeit it could be very minor, you know, depending on a lot of factors, but, I mean, development and has environmental impact.
Do you have a follow-up, sir?
And if I could mention something about compliance? If that's, yeah. Uh, thank you. The part of, a, a way to help with compliance would be a follow-up as-built survey after construction to, you know, close out the permit. That would be an easy way to see what was constructed after the fact. So you don't just have somebody getting a permit and then doing whatever they want. And then also I would say, I, I am, you know, I've been a, uh, I'm, I'm Alaska resident, grew up in Anchorage, I moved out here a little over 10, about 11 years ago and been working, um, for, out here, private and public development. And, um, you know, any permit I've come in, have to do a hearing for, there's always comments, who's going to come, who's, who's going to make sure this is, you know, compliance? Who's going to, who's going to come enforce this stuff? There, if, you know, and it's with every permit, I get comments on that. So, I mean, I think you guys might need to take a real serious look at compliance. I mean, I don't, it does cause issues in my field a little bit. I don't know how much Bill's had, but when you were trying to help a developer, landowner, whoever, and you're trying to advise them and tell them, you know, this is what the regulation says, and then they come back and say, well, who's really gonna, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna check? And at that point, as an engineer professional, and I say, well, I don't, you know, this is not for me then. If this is the way you're gonna look at this, you know, we have, we have regulations we have to follow. And that's why I'm putting my stamp on things. So, I mean, just, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of things to think about when, as a topic of compliance.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, through the mayor. I've had to walk away from some jobs before because the homeowner or the contractor decided not to, not to follow the rules. And it is quite difficult to ensure compliance. But ultimately, I was here when the last comprehensive land use plan was implemented. And the idea was actually to assist all the residents to make sure that if they came up with a plot plan, that it fit all the rules, the required setbacks. And then ultimately, it was tossed because there wasn't basically a clear benefit from that. So in this case, there would be public outreach, letting the public know why these rules are in place, and then following up with, hopefully, there's voluntary complaints. That would make it a lot easier for the borough staff. But then ultimately, the enforcement with fines and levies for people that do choose to color outside the lines. And that will make, well, it is a contentious issue, but by and large, the 99% of the people that follow the rules will support you when it's enforced for the 1% that doesn't.
Yeah, go ahead, Matthew.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could, I'd just like to add a comment in response to Assemblymember Summers' question about the data that's available and whether our lakes are impaired or not. And I'll just point, it's a very accurate or good question. And the answer is that we have very limited data about the water quality in our lakes. So the borough used to have a volunteer lake monitoring program that has not been in place for several years. So we're not collecting data. On many of the lakes, there were years of data that were collected. The Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation does limited sampling. They don't have the budget to get out and sample all of our lakes or on a routine basis. Often, they're responding to concerns that are raised to them by residents around the lake. As you pointed out, Big Lake is impaired, that's from watercraft. It's not, you know, so it's hydrocarbon contamination and it's from the boat use, both two-stroke and four-stroke boats, and it's a small area. And I'll point out, Big Lake, given the volume of the lake, it's, would be really unlikely that the entire lake would ever be impaired. Portions of it, yes, you just have a huge mixing volume. And for large lakes, like, you know, Lake Louise, for example, limited development around the lake, large dilution volume. But we have a lot of small lakes as well, we have a lot of shallow lakes as well. And as, you know, Tim pointed out, there's a very strong and direct line between waterfront development levels and density levels and water quality impairment. And so it's, if we don't protect our water quality, it's just a matter of time, right? Essentially, every surface water body in Anchorage is impaired, right? All the lakes, all the streams, they have greater density than we do. But the point is, we're not trying to prevent development around the lakes, right? I mean, and we're not trying to stop growth in the borough. So the expectation is that lots that are currently undeveloped at some point in the future will be developed, and that's a positive thing. We just want to make sure that that development doesn't result in impacts, like you say, to the neighbors, to the public using the lake, to property values, et cetera, right? And it's not all just from, well, I mean, it is associated with the development, but as Tim pointed out, for Cottonwood Creek, you have septic effluents, like Lucille, same issue, right? And that's, that's not directly a setback issue, but certainly it is related to, you know, waterfront development. So as Tim pointed out, there's lots of potential sources of pollution. These recommendations don't address all of them, but they do address some that are pretty substantial.
Assemblyperson Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. To the board, as you guys were developing these recommendations, did you talk about the cost of typical homeowner having to potentially dig up a fuel tank, have the soil tested, either put in a double walled back in the hole or fill in the hole end and putting one above ground? That's just an example, but, you know, putting reparations, because some of these homes don't have any of this, and so they'd have to do it all to come in compliance. And I know a lot of people have scraped every penny they have together to be able to buy a house on a lake for their family. So was there a discussion about the potential, you know, financial cost associated with this?
Bill, go ahead.
Thank you, through the mayor. Yes, there was, we did talk about that. And in the case of fuel tanks, we, our first brush with it was to put a five-year requirement. There was thoughts of maybe putting a 10-year requirement, but at what point do we draw a line? So we recommended five years, hopefully to get people in compliance. But it's not all rich people around the lake. People have had these properties for a long time, and exactly, a lot of people are scraping by. So we tried to make it, tried to make it reasonable to that. And also with new development, if we can catch it early or notify the developers, then money won't have been spent wastefully. It'll all be within planting measures, burning things up, but putting a lot of the habitat protection requirements in place in the first place and not having to retrofit later. So yes, we thought a lot about cost.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Alex Strawn, Planning Director. So, I mean, I think I talked about this at the joint planning commission assembly meeting, but I did reach out to an outfit that does fuel tanks. And I asked what the cost would be if somebody had a single walled fuel tank that was closer than 75 feet, what would be the cost of replacing that with something that would comply with these regulations? We even provided a copy of the specific language in the regulations. And essentially, between disposing of the old fuel tank and removing it, redoing the site, and then you're putting in a more expensive system, double walled, and I think like drip collection and things like that, they estimated that the cost would be, you know, just a ballpark. He first was hesitant to give me an answer, but I said, can you just give me a ballpark? And he thought, probably around $20,000, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I could speak to that, Madam Mayor. So we did talk about this. I, I don't, so the recommendations do not require double wall tank. In fact, they don't even require secondary containment, if, as long as you don't have a gravity-fed system. So there's no reason to replace an existing tank. Where we came from on this is looking at structures that are between 45 and 75 feet. So if you have a residence that's inside the setback, existing, in many of these locations, heating oil is how you heat your home, right? So if your house is 60 feet from the water's edge, you probably have a heating oil tank that's at least that close. Also knowing that people have float planes, people have boats, so they have gas, they have fuel for their boats or other equipment. And in many cases, you would have a tank that's closer than 75 feet. I would be very surprised if folks had underground tanks on their private properties, commercial, maybe. Commercial tanks are regulated by DEC, that's a totally different issue. So they would already have secondary containment or a double wall tank. But so this is really looking at residences, private sites, smaller tanks, under 500 gallons. And there are lots of options to actually provide secondary containment or go to a pump-driven system where you've got shut-off valves or actually very low cost. And so I'll just point out, I personally live on a lake. Throughout this entire process, I was always thinking to myself, is this a hoop that I'm gonna want to jump through? Do I think this is fair? Do I think this is expensive? So that, you know, maybe I'm willing to spend more money to protect water quality than my neighbors. And so I'll, you know, admit that upfront. But certainly, we did not want to create onerous standards for folks or standards that would be impossible for people to come into compliance with.
Yes, Assemblyperson Sumner, and then Assemblyperson Hale.
This is a question for probably the engineers on the setback advisory board. But are there any current DEC rules regulating fuel tank proximity to water bodies?
I'm not currently aware of them. I mean, I'm sure there's something, but, I mean, I know I've looked into it, it's been a few years now. But I'm sure there's something, I just, I don't know off the top of my head.
I believe there are requirements for commercial fuel tanks, but as far as residential, the septic code requires any source of contamination to be 100 feet away. And I presume that would also apply to residential fuel tanks. It's supposed to be 25 feet from a well, but I couldn't say what DEC's requirements are relative to that. Sorry, Matt, Mike.
Yeah, so, Assemblymember Sumner. So DEC has best practices, but relating to residential tanks, they recommend 100 feet from water body. They recommend covering the tank, they don't, as a part of their standard BMPs, they don't recommend necessarily secondary containment. So they have a lot of outreach materials, but the state's approach is that local municipalities are better able to identify standards. DEC regulates things primarily through permitting, and they don't want to require every property owner who has a heating oil tank to get a permit.
I would add that DEC, you know, for sweat purposes for construction, requires secondary containment of fuels and petroleum products. And if we're requiring contractors to do it, we should be, you know, pretty comfortable with using that stuff. We should probably be requiring homeowners who, I don't know, tend to be a little bit looser with, you know, the way they handle things. Just thought that.
Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Yeah, on the fuel tank thing, I'd just like to reiterate that this is only for gravity-fed tanks. You're not gonna have a gravity-fed tank that's underground. You're not gonna have to dig anything up because you're not, you're not gravity-feeding from below the structure. Really, all you have to do is buy a giant tub that is 110% of the volume of your 55-gallon barrel and put it under your 55-gallon barrel, and you're in compliance with this. This is for, this is for those old 55-gallon barrel drip stove systems that you see where it's up on some legs in the back of the house there, and it's got the little filter and it drips down through. This is not for, or another solution would be to get rid of the gravity-fed system and put in place a pump instead, and then you're in compliance. So it's not super expensive or, you know, whatever. But one thing I would like to hear from the lawyer, if I might, the attorney.
I'll go look for him.
There he comes, there he comes.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear from the attorney here on the, on the, the opinion that he produced that says that if we're gonna do this, if we're gonna allow people to come into compliance within 45 feet, then we also additionally have to let people in the future build within 45 feet. And I'd like to hear how ironclad he thinks that is.
Pretty ironclad. So if you're gonna say, look, so as I understand it, the proposal was something like, well, if you're within, if you're closer than 75 feet and you do an engineering analysis and make a drainage swale and mitigate and whatever, and make it so that your impacts to the water body are minimized, then we'll let you stay. But anybody who hasn't built, you can't do that. You can't minimize your water body, you can't avail yourself of the same thing. That impacts quite a few different things. And one of those things is, you're just saying to people, well, because they were here first, they get to stay, right? And so one of the first things is, any governmental rule that you, that you put in place has to be rationally related to a legitimate governmental interest. That is the lowest standard of review that a court would apply. There is no legitimate governmental interest to tell people who have built since, I have to check my computer here, probably, I think it's 2007. Since 2007, constructionment or placement of any building, not structure, not residence, any building within 75 feet of a water course or water body requires a mandatory land use permit under 1702. It requires it today. Anyone who's building within 75 feet, even if it's allowed, it's a boathouse, it's a hangar, it's a dock, it's a pier, any building, a shed, anything. So what you're gonna say is, it's this, it's this, well, we want to tell people who are there, they get to stay, but we want to close the door to the future people. That's what the 75-foot water body setback is. That's what grandfather rights are, people who are grandfathered get to stay. So in 1987, as Alex kind of went through it, that's when the new rules started. And people who are currently there in violation, if you're trying to find a path forward for them to let them stay, but also make them minimize it, there's not, there's not a legal way to get there. It's kind of reminiscent of, it's not quite the same thing. But when the PFD was first passed in this state, the rule was, the longer you're here, the more you get. And the US Supreme Court, our Alaska Supreme Court said, yeah, that's totally fine. And the US Supreme Court said, no way, Jose. Governmental benefits and governmental restrictions have to apply equally to people. So there's, there's no way that you say to somebody, well, you built in 2015, so we're gonna let you stay as long as you do XYZ, but if you want to build in 2025, you can't, even if you're willing to do the same XYZ. And therein lies the problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Assemblyperson, oh, did you have a comment?
Oh, okay. If I understood that right, you just said we have a mandatory land use permit for anything within 75 feet of water body? That's the current rule. How many times are people applying for that? Do they know it exists?
Alex Strawn, Planning Director. I think it's around half a dozen per year that we get. It's a very small number. We went from getting several hundred a year to about half a dozen.
And how much of the percentage of home building on water bodies do you think that is? Or construction on water bodies within 75 feet, any idea?
No idea.
Okay. To the grandfather clause, I guess I just, it's very confusing because we grandfathered people in, and we could take this up later, but we grandfathered people in when we created this rule in '73. We grandfathered them again in '87. We grandfathered the gravel pits in to go into the water table and said, no longer shall you do that because we think there's a legitimate public interest. So I don't, I don't know how protecting water quality isn't a legitimate public interest, but I can take it offline because I think it's gonna, with me, it's gonna be a back and forth. And I don't want to drag this down because I know we have limited time.
The difference is, it's not simply telling people who are there, they get to stay. It's telling them they get to stay if they do XYZ, but then telling other people who are willing to do XYZ that they can't go. That's the difference. Because grandfather rights are, you get to stay as you are because you were there before the law changed.
I just hear we have a way to figure out this problem we're trying to solve, and there's a lot of consensus that if we could deal with that problem, that it would solve a lot of problems in going forward. So I'll want to follow up with you and see if we can find a way to deal with that because it simplifies this a lot.
Assemblyperson Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Alex, I got a question for clarification on what Assemblymember Hale was talking about, the gravity-fed fuel tanks, because I'm looking at item seven in the resolution, and it says, "Prevention of liquid petroleum fuel contamination. Adopt measures to mitigate the risk of liquid fuel contamination near water bodies by requiring secondary containment or drip collection for all fuel installations within 75 feet of water bodies, including both existing and new installations." So I don't see anything in there that just says- So I don't see anything in there that just says it's only for gravity-fed fuel systems. Can you clarify that?
So I believe there's two different options. You can either have a double wall tank or something with 110% capacity to catch leaks, or you could do a non-gravity fed system. So if, if, you know, the entire thing can't leak out because it's not elevated essentially. Does that answer your question? So there's options. You don't necessarily have to go to the double wall tank. You can go with a non-gravity fed system.
Right, but it doesn't specifically say gravity-fed in here. It, when you're coming in compliance, if you have a buried tank within a 75-foot setback, wouldn't that be part of that compliance?
So you're on the resolution right now?
I am. Item seven?
Item seven.
It's the resolution, item number seven. So the language in there says all fuel installations. It doesn't specify gravity-fed.
Can he get back to you because we need to wrap up here too?
That might not be perfectly worded.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Assemblyperson Hale.
Yeah, I'll address that real quick first. In, in section seven, it says requiring secondary containment or drip collection. And in the actual ordinance, the section, subsection D, except that's provided in subparagraph one, yada, yada, have to have the secondary containment or whatever. Subsection one says, pump-activated fuel delivery systems with leak detection and auto shut-off may have a drip collection system instead of a secondary containment. So that's, that's where I get the gravity-fed from, if that's, you know, just to be clear. The other thing I was going to ask is related to the, to the comment, we already have a mandatory land use permit for structures within 75 feet of the water body. Is there any kind of requirement for real estate agents to disclose that that is, that that is a borough rule when they sell a piece of property that is located on a water body? I know there are several legal disclosures that are required of real estate agents required by certain different governmental bodies. Do we require any disclosures?
Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, so I am not sure exactly what is required for a licensed real estate agent to disclose to their clients. That's not my realm of expertise, but we do have.
Maybe Bill knows. Bill, do you know?
Yeah, in our purchase and sale agreement, it has, you need to do your own due diligence that real estate agents can't be held responsible for all those different details.
Sure. Yeah, I was just thinking that if they were, if it was disclosed to them as a matter, of course, then the homeowner would have no, you know, leg to stand on if they said, well, I didn't know.
Deputy Mayor, did you have a comment, sir?
I was going to say, in 1998, we had a project down Valdez for Alaska Housing. They had all these buried tanks. So we got to dig up 30 or 40 buried tanks, put above-ground systems in, encapsulate the fuel lines with the plastic secondary encapsulation. So if there was any leaks and stuff. But when we dug up them tanks, you know where they were rustiest? At the bottom. And if you have a hole in the bottom of a tank, even if it's buried, it's going to all drain out.
Dale, go ahead.
I'd still like to follow up on that Tim's question. Where it's disclosed, is that the title company? They bring out the as-built, but I can tell you, I've sat through many, many closings, and they're so excited to sign, they just say, yeah, 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 yeah. Where'd I sign, where'd I sign, where'd I sign?
Yeah, I mean, that clocks. I can see that.
It really does fall back on them because they're not paying attention and the information is being provided to them.
And lenders are very concerned about that. But if it's a cash purchase, the buyer just can go, okay, that's fine. I still want the property.
Okay, so go ahead. Do you have some parting comments, sir?
Yeah, just to, on some member Bernier's comment. So when I spoke with, I think it was Prism, it's the company that installs fuel tanks, they said it's very rare to do an underground fuel tank in the valley because when a fuel tank is underground, it's exposed to water and it creates this oxidation process which causes them to rust. So down, in Fairbanks, it's much more common because it's so cold, it can congeal. But up here, or in Matsu, it's very rare and not recommended to do buried tanks.
Okay. Well, does anybody have a real burning question that nobody else can answer except the Water Body Setback Committee? Okay, well, again, all of you, we thank you very much for all the hours plus also coming tonight. Hopefully, I think you've been able to shed some light on your product and given some assurances to the assembly. So partying assembly comments? Anybody have a parting assembly comment? Yeah, go ahead.
I just really appreciate the work that the members of this committee put into it. Like, we really took up a lot of your time and and you really tried to find solutions. I'm sorry that the way the process worked out, that at the end, you found out that you couldn't do something that you wanted to do, which is that just find a pathway to compliance for the people who are out of compliance. And I think that is going to be the hardest thing for us to struggle with. I feel like the goal in the valley is to have clean water, but we're flying in the dark. We don't really test a lot, so we don't know. And I don't know how much you discussed whether that was practical in terms of expense, et cetera. So you're trying to find things that you know have worked in other places that are best practice. So mainly, just really wanted to say thank you for the, a lot of work. And I'm really glad we were able to have this meeting. I wish we, maybe next time when we do one of these, we do it around the table. I don't like, this is a discussion. So just thank you very much for all your unpaid work and service and expertise that you brought to the table.
Assemblyperson Hale, did you have parting comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you guys for all your work. Long process. And I, what I don't want to see is us kind of take all of your work and then just put it on a shelf somewhere and just let it molder. And I know the mayor brought up the Police Powers Task Force where that essentially happened. So I have asked staff to bring this forward for referral to the Planning Commission. And my intent is to refer it to the Fish and Wildlife Commission as well. Whether this, whether this passes or fails or is significantly altered, I think is a discussion that the folks up here should ought to have. And we ought to have as much, as much input on this, on this subject as, as we can get before we even start to make our decision. So I will be moving that forward to referrals, so.
Assemblyperson Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to echo that too. I mean, you guys have given up like 18 months of your life to this project. And, you know, I've spent most of my adult life serving on councils and committees and boards. And a lot of the work that, you know, I helped put together never got implemented. So I understand the frustration that goes behind that. But I, you know, regardless of how this turns out or how I feel personally, I appreciate all the work that you've done, all the time that you've put in. And I will be looking at this, you know, seriously, considering all of your recommendations. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Assemblyperson Fana, parting comment?
Yeah, thank you. It was an interesting meeting, and I was listening on the phone through it the whole time before I arrived here. So throughout this whole process, since I was here and when the whole discussion started about the setback, it was strictly about the structure, the distance between the water. It was kind of very simple. That's what we tried, that was the argument. We, obviously, as the body didn't get anywhere, we thought that this group will give us kind of recommendation specific on that. Looking back after this whole many pages, it seems like that there is no clear data or we know that the house, the structure itself doesn't actually pull the water or it does in a very minimal way. But however, the other, many other factors that play actually bigger factor. One, you know, that fuel tank can cause a lot more damage than maybe a house that would stand there for decades, okay? When I was in Florida, there was homes that are probably 25 feet apart, and they're like on the eighth or a quarter, no, not even quarter, probably an eight acre. And they're like so close. But there's just the system that they have, the seawall, I think they call it. It's a very common practice. And I don't know what their water, water quality. So if we're really now realizing that the structure is not that many issue by many other factors, I can see us then focusing more on that side of things. But now kind of making the, more difficult for the structures. We want, if we realize that the problem is in many other layers, maybe we focus on that, but not necessarily on the number. So then that number can be lenient. If we really actually wanted to, if we're talking about water quality, let's say Big Lake would be a good example. It is probably not very debatable that it's the water crafts and things that aren't the water that are probably causing that water based on the, those engines, doesn't matter what, how many strokes they are. But that, then the, then the structures. So if we were to say, oh, if we really care about waters, let's ban all water craft. You know, this room wouldn't ever fit all the people that would come and say, hey, we bought this house specifically for that purpose and that. So are we there to enjoy the water or are we there to cater to a few people? I believe we are to here to enjoy this property, to enjoy responsibly, obviously. So if that was the really intent now, then we should look at the things that affect the most because we can ban all the houses and everything else, but not cause the main issue that maybe causes 95% of things. Then it's kind of like, we're really, you know, one country is trying to put unreasonable regulation for all the people while the rest of the world is not doing anything. But that seems like we're not actually being effective. So that's what I realized from all the information that you brought. So if we do want to focus that, it's not necessarily maybe the buildings that are causing this and building, and with a legal opinion, it seems like, yeah, there's, we got to treat them same if we're going to let others do it, we're going to do it for the future. And those same people who want these ordinance to pass to make things more stricter for water quality, they're saying everything except the new construction, which is also, so we won't be able to please everybody. But however, I did realize some from some, and I want to appreciate your guys' all the information. I think it was very helpful. And I think there are some things that we can pick and choose that's something that will ultimately be something that will be beneficial, yet still not as restrictive. So thank you for that.
I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at, we're not going to get back to six o'clock. What do you need to say, sir? Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a couple, couple of comments. I think that most of the fuel tanks that I see for home heating are not 55-gallon drums. I could drive you around Bill's, Bill or Ron's district and show you hundreds of 300 and 500-gallon drums up on stands that are used for home heating. Also, I have a lot of experience with secondary containment. I've installed a lot of secondary containment. I've used secondary containment. You have to have a way to drain it, you know, and a lot of people just leave the darn plug open. I don't know what purpose secondary containment serves when it's just dripping right on out, either way. But more to the point, I mean, I appreciate all you guys' work for the last 18 months. I think if we ever do this again, we should be sitting down there and they should be sitting up here, by the way. I think that, you know, reading through all this, I understand where you guys are coming from. If the point is to protect water quality, you know, these are the things that you must do to protect water quality. I understand that. I think that, you know, in spite of that, or, you know, you got to realize that some of these things don't survive in the real world. And how do you enforce them? How much money do you spend on enforcing them? You know, there is no such thing as protection without, in society, there's no such thing as protection without sacrificing some rights. And I personally, thank you very much for your sacrifice, but I personally think you guys err on the side of sacrificing too much rights. That's just my opinion, but thank you very much.
All righty, before anybody can raise their hand, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 5:46. We'll see you back here at six o'clock. And I just wanted to say to the water body setback people, thank you for the ones that have volunteered for a new project.